All right, 6 o'clock. We will call the October 23 meeting to order. Do a quick roll call. Chris Boyce, here. Anna Mercerit.
Here.
Senator Jane Fornes. I think she will be late, so she won't comment on this agenda item. Alyssa Gamble.
Here.
Jason Plutroff.
Here.
Welcomed with music. Okay, first item on the agenda is the citizens' petition.
Chris, is that what you said?
I have no idea what that is. It's how we start our meetings now. It's a new way. It's a citizens' petition on 3A. If there's someone here to present, otherwise you can open up the public comment. Someone to make a comment on it? We have read it. I just want to make sure that any comments you want to make, you can make them now.
Diana Vienz, Precinct 2. I am the clerk of the No 23A Committee. I feel like I have to acknowledge that this planning board finds itself in a little bit of an awkward position, having to vote on the rights to decide on something like this. Of course, we're not looking to change, you know, Zone A into Zone B, or you can park over here and not over here. We're looking to have the final say at the ballot box, just like the 17-plus other towns have had via town meeting. Some via initiative, sorry, some via referendum. Milton is one of them. And who was the other? One of them just handed in 4500 signatures yesterday to have a referendum. We didn't do it that way. We took the initiative petition route, which is one of our options as one of the 26 states in the nation that has that ability to legislate directly via initiative petition as citizens of this great Commonwealth. I think, at the end of the day, you know, the 60 days ran out on Friday, so this is going to the ballot one way or another. That being said, I think it's kind of a unique opportunity for this planning board to weigh in as citizens of this town. If you value the right to vote, if you endorse the opportunity for our citizens to have a say on one of those most impactful pieces of legislation in our lifetime, in several lifetimes, in this, you know, in the history of our nation, I urge you to endorse our initiative petition, endorse our right to vote as citizens of the Commonwealth and citizens of Winthrop, Massachusetts, and thank you very much.
Okay, first I'll open up the public comment if there is any. I just want to remind people that this is only on the citizens' petition. We are not making a recommendation on 3A tonight. We're not making a recommendation on districts or areas. It's just the petition that we're hearing. So any public comment, please step up to the microphone and say your name and district. Step right up.
Peter Gill, Precinct 5. You're probably going to get tired of hearing me say vote no for 3A, but just in case you forgot, that's my feeling. But I also would ask the board to recommend to the town council to put this item on the ballot. I would like to have some say as a citizen of this community on this. And, you know, if the vote goes the way I don't like it, then so be it. But I think we all need the chance to express our concerns, and I appreciate it. So I would appreciate it if you guys would recommend to the council that we go on the ballot.
Kathleen Capuccio, 49 Waldemar Avenue. So petition number two states that any plan to comply with 3A and any final approval of changes or districting to comply with 3A shall be voted upon by the voters. So that's what our petition number two states. So petition number two, unlike how it was referred here, is not a zoning article pursuant to law. A zoning article must seek to create or amend a zone or a use restriction. This petition does neither of those things. This is, I don't blame the planning board at all. This was erroneously sent to the planning board. It is not a zoning article. It should not be in the planning board's hands. But again, no disrespect to the planning board for thinking you need to make a recommendation, which no disrespect is rather meaningless at this point. Again, as, you know, Ms. Vienz stated, the town's time ran out on Friday, October 18th. That's not just pursuant to the charter, that's pursuant to state law. So at this point, you know, and we don't want to have to go to court, but, you know, the 1,100-plus people that have signed a petition that want our voters to vote on this, we're going to get that right. It's just going to happen, come hell or high water, it's going to happen. Again, I just feel actually bad, to an extent, that the planning board has been put in this position because you just, you don't have authority in this, specifically with regard to the petition. And for that, I actually think that's terrible that you've been put in this position.
Hi. Todd Sacco, Precinct 2. I believe you have the ability to positive recommendation, no recommendation, or negative recommendation. Is that correct?
I see only a yes or no vote. Is that your understanding?
So what does a yes vote mean?
A yes vote would signify that the planning board should recommend to town council that this petition would amend the current ordinance, zoning ordinance, by Section 17.04.060 that allows that any zoning laws related to 3A go to a ballot question. A no is a rejection of the petition to amend our current zoning ordinance.
But of course, coming from your group, it's just more of a recommendation because it's not, it holds no weight. Okay. I urge you to consider a yes vote, and not really, at this point, because of the politics of it, but more because of the behavior of our current, the current makeup of our town council. This town council has its priorities backwards. The only meaningful vote I've seen them take this year is to raise the pride flag on June 6th. I have not seen them do anything of any substance or meaning, other than some of the other state projects, grant projects, and things that were already slated. The bottom line is, it's times like this when something so important as land, and maybe some of you are landowners and maybe some of you aren't. If you aren't, maybe someday you will be. Land is your power and your freedom, and it's why the people should be in charge of it. And I understand there's been precedent and the like, but you have the opportunity here to be part of the, of a movement, however small it is, across, what is it, 51 potential counties and municipalities that are not with the whole 3A thing. You have an opportunity here to be part of that, to put the power back in the people's hands, stop the bullying from our state legislature, stop the middle-of-the-night bills being passed. We are heading in a bad direction, and land is all that we have. Okay? I've worked my entire life for a little bit of wealth I have in my property, and I'm losing it as inflation continues to go up. We really have to be smart about this vote, and I encourage you to vote yes.
Yeah, I'm Tom DeDarian, Precinct 3. May I ask a question of our town council? Does this-
Out of the council, their legal representation, town council, SEL.
What is your title?
SEL.
Turn it.
SEL council, just wanted to clarify.
Does this board have the power to nullify a state law? Does the town council have the power to nullify a state law? And does a townwide referendum have the power to nullify a state law?
Under the Massachusetts Constitution, the answer is no. To all three.
Any other public comment?
Hi, good evening. My name is Gianna Tamis, 56 Waldemar Avenue, and candidate for 3rd Suffolk State Senate. The right to vote is integral to the fabric of our society. The significance of our having to exercise this right through initiative petition is honorable. It is by the book, and everyone in this room wears validation of this right in their sleeves. This town has a history of widespread initiative precision. Prove us wrong, that our petition will be heard. Not heard. How do I say that? Prove us wrong, that you will hear us, and that this petition will go through, even though it is denied.
Paul Crutcher, 2. I'm not really sure this is the right forum for this, but it's on my chest, I'm afraid I've got to let it out. This 3A premise, this rule, is based upon, we have a housing crisis. Well, quite frankly, nobody's proven to me we have a housing crisis, and I don't believe it. And at any point in the future, you'd like to debate that issue with me, I'd like to do that, but I won't take up everybody's time. There was a society that said, if you repeat a lie often enough, it becomes the truth, right? So Massachusetts, and that's what they're doing, they're repeating a lie that we have a housing crisis, and everybody's saying it. Every elected official is saying the same thing. Every level of government is saying the same thing. We all have an energy crisis. I contest that. In this state, we're bleeding legal citizens. They were leaving a couple of months, a couple of years ago at the rate of 4,400 a month, and that's accelerated, I'm sure, since then. A population in this state has not grown significantly. So with all these people leaving, and, of course, we all see the building all over the place. You see them going up every place you go. You can't say to me, you don't. So we're building more housing, we're losing legal residents, all leaving. The population isn't growing, so where is the housing crisis? I asked the same question to our current senator, Lydia Edwards. Wouldn't answer the question. Only she relies on Secretary Auguste, I'm sorry if I didn't say his name right, because he told her, so she repeats it. We don't have a housing crisis, and nobody can prove to me. I don't think we should make a ruling on a bad, faulty premise. Additionally, you might say, well, you don't have a housing crisis, prices of housing is through the roof. We have affordability crisis, yes, which is also, also caused by government intervention. And I love to speak to every single member of the board and explain that, how we have an affordability crisis that is, that's created from government interfering with the market. So don't make a bad decision that's based on faulty premise to begin with, or you have to prove to me that we actually have a housing crisis. Nobody's done that. Thank you for taking me.
Let me make this pretty quick. Kurt Malar, Precinct 2. Thinking about the petition, we have the right to petition as citizens. It's in the state law, right? What's interesting I am finding about this is interpreting laws, you put four lawyers in a room, you get four different interpretations of the law, right? Some will agree with each other on some portions of it, and different, it changes. So with this, looking at our petition, an interpretation was done, and the interpretation put it in your hands to make a recommendation. I don't think that's fair to put on you as a board. So for me, I would say vote yes to allow us as citizens to move forward with the petition that we've agreed to put in front, to move forward. I think saying a no would take some of our rights for the petition away.
Hello. Carol Meach, Precinct 1. I think there are a couple of things that, about the planning board that I'd like to recognize, and that the first thing is, for the last several, the decades, couple of decades, you all have been working very hard to grow our community in a responsible way. 3A comes along and is going to take that from our community, the ability to be able to do that, the way we have always been responsible. We are the ones who, or you are the ones who recognize affordability in our town and what we need. The state can't do that. This petition, I think, will take away more than it will give us, and I think that it is important that the citizens of this town all work together, work with you, work with the town council, whoever that may be, to say, we are going to keep these decisions within our rights here because our town is very unique to anywhere else in the Commonwealth. So I hope you say yes to this petition to move it, when you move it over, because I think otherwise, it's going to hurt us all in the long run.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll open up the board deliberation. I want to start with a question, I guess, quickly for Attorney Cipuleta. This petition, just to clarify, so I want to remind everybody, this, you know, 3A, we will set up a meeting in November, early November, where we'll discuss our recommendation and the process moving forward. This vote tonight, or recommendation to town council for their vote, is only on the citizens' petition to add this zoning text. I wanted to clarify that this is, in fact, is a zoning petition to add a new section to our zoning code, 17.04.060, which outlines two points. One, any plan considered to vote upon, is ordered to comply with 3A or associated guidelines of executive housing, as currently in effect, or, or as amended, shall be voted upon by the registered voters of the town of Winthrop by a ballot question, and not by the Winthrop Town Council. And point number two, included in the zoning text is, any final approval of proposed changes to the Winthrop zoning code or districting shall be a ballot question voted on by the registered voters of Winthrop. Is your understanding that this is, this is actually an addition to our zoning code?
Yes. It, excuse me if I may, Mr. Chairman. Again, I have to preface this. Anything I say is not an endorsement or repudiation of the law. It's an interpretation of the Massachusetts statute, the way that it's been laid out and adjudicated by the appeals in this SJC. But yes, it, Section 17 is entitled the zoning code, or zoning ordinance of the town of Winthrop. And Section 5 of Chapter 48 says that no zoning ordinance or bylaw, or amendment thereto, shall be adopted until after the planning board in a city or town, or the city council or committee designated or appointed for such purpose by the council, shall have a public hearing. That's it. This is the public hearing.
All right, thanks. Thanks for clarifying. I mean, so I guess, I know it's going to be an unpopular opinion in this room, but after reading through the petition and what we're being asked to recommend, a lot of the towns, I think, referenced were essentially town meeting, where the town did vote, and town meeting made a vote to approve or deny 3A. That's not the form of government that exists in Winthrop. I do believe that we have a path to bring this to a valid vote. That's a referendum petition? The referendum petition would bring it? There are other paths that are within our form of government, without changing zoning. I guess my concern is two things. One, this is coming in advance of a recommendation or advance of understanding what the town council will even do with 3A. And two, that floodplain overlays are state mandated overlay districts, kind of no different than, in some ways, that we're experiencing with 3A. They actually put cost on the homeowner, in some ways. Any amendments or changes to those, if they had to go to a ballot item each time, are going to result in special elections and cost to the taxpayers. Right? I think that each time we do have a change, let's, let's say 3A becomes a law, each time we do have a change, there's, there's a petition path to put that on the ballot. Every change being on the ballot, I think, might become a burdensome cost to this town. I'd also just say that, you know, if we had town meeting, this wouldn't really even be a question. I feel pretty confident, I think most people in this room probably do, that this will end up on the ballot regardless. So I think I'd let our government see that process through before we make any recommendation on this petition. But I'd like to hear what the board thinks about what they've read.
I'll make a comment. I think that's a good point about, I'm sorry, Alyssa Gamble, about other state laws that come through. Are you saying that this would also lead us-
No, no, this is only about 3A.
Okay. I guess, in terms of how I understand this, it seems to me that we have a process in our town. We have these open meetings with public comment, and I believe that as a board, we've really demonstrated that we listen, and that we can take a combination of our experience and our expertise, and we can use the concerns of the community to really help us shape the recommendations that we make. And so it sounds to me like the request is being asked to have in this one case, for this one zoning law, that we would then act like an open town meeting, and that is not our form of town government. So to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense. It sounds like it would be costly and time-consuming, and it's not the process that we have in place.
So I would tend to agree with that, that, you know, we do have a process that's outlined. So we do have a process that's outlined, and whether an issue is controversial or not, the process should be the same. If, if each time a controversial issue comes along and it has to be treated differently, it will become very confusing. It'll take a lot more time, and it will add cost. And it's not clear to me, structurally, sort of what, why this would be, why this process really should be any different, that, that the process is designed for controversial and non-controversial issues, and it's the, you know, having, having, having a different process for one issue seems unusual to me.
For American citizens, this is wild. Yeah, it's a little scary.
We had a period for public comment. We had a period for public comment. I think public comment is closed. We've closed public comment.
Again, as your candidate, this would never happen, and I encourage our democracy-
We've closed public comment.
Oh, you closed public comment? Well, that's fine. We were just told that it was-
And we opened public comment, and then we closed it, now it's board deliberation.
And that's fine, and I appreciate that. So I am going to excuse myself, because I do appreciate the process. There is a process in place, but to be so condescending to say that we have no right as citizens is in-
That's now, that's just to be clear.
Somebody up on Beacon Hill can just decide what every town has to do without consulting the towns are taking into consideration what needs to happen is appalling. And as a town, and as a planning board, you all should take into consideration all the nuances of our beautiful town and everything that has to be put into that. You, we elected you to represent us and to make these, help us along.
We're not elected officials, just to be clear. You know, but, but I want to just point out that we, we, we hope we've made clear through our process of 3A that we do understand the nuances of Winthrop. We all live here, we're all homeowners here. We do care deeply about it. At the end of the day, we want to make sure we follow the process, there is a process, after a town vote, to go for a referendum ballot, to put this on the ballot, and go for a town vote. I totally anticipate that that will happen. I don't think that adding zoning ordinances is what I'm saying is, is the way to go about that.
And I'm sorry, I don't know.
Do you have another public comment? We're not going to talk out of turn anymore. Thank you. Do we have one more public comment?
I wasn't able to get up.
I understand, I appreciate that.
Just a quick question, if I could make a suggestion, that you could have the public comment after you decide what you're going to discuss, and people can react to that, because it sounds like you've changed the plan now. So what I would suggest is, when you do your agenda, there was no public comment on it. So I would suggest that you have another public comment, so people aren't enraged when they leave here. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing.
Thank you, Diane.
Would you like one, Jack? Typically, the way we approach it, from a planning board perspective, so everybody's clear, is we hear the applicant, we open up the public comment, we can then take that public comment into consideration as the board deliberates before the board votes. Right? So we don't have multiple public comments. It's been our process for a long time. It's not different tonight. It has not been different. So. Any other board comments? No? All right.
Why don't anybody comment?
Would you like another public comment, Diana?
Yes.
All right, this, we'll open it up one more time, and then we're going to go to a vote.
Yeah, so we're not taking away your ability or authority to make these plans whatsoever. We're not interested. It's not our, it's not our forte. We're saying we have the final say, and that's for a very good reason. We've exercised our right via initiative petition to say, we now will change our government, that's a part of our constitution, that's a part of our state laws, that's a part of our local laws, to decide this for ourselves. If you're deciding not to adopt that, it's actually not even in your authority, it's just basically an endorsement, and it's happening anyway, and you're stopping the process here, which makes our lives a lot easier. I'm sorry, it does. So thank you. Everyone in this room is making sure that they will be at the vote when, when this does go to vote, because it is happening. Attorney Cipuleta, it is happening, I'm so sorry. But, but whatever you have planned here, you've very, you've done a very good job, because what these people have said has echoed exactly what you have said, and erroneously so, for the past, I don't know, month, since you actually started to read this stuff.
Suzanne Swob, Precinct 4. I was, I thought that this, when I read this, I thought this was not a zoning board issue. I know Mr. Cipuleta has suggested that it was, but I'm thinking that a petition obviously has a reason, and any petition that comes through a citizens' petition would have, they would be discussing something, you know? But it's more about whether the citizens can vote on things like this. I saw what Mr. Cipuleta wrote, and it was, it seems as if it was conflated with a zoning board issue. So there's a citizens' petition, and then there's a zoning issue. And what I saw from the citizens, I didn't see them recommending anything about zoning, about any changes in zoning, or anything like that. In this petition, they're just asking to vote on whatever is put forward, and in this case, to vote. So that's my understanding of it, and it is different than Mr. Cipuleta's. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Chris, I have a question for Attorney Cipuleta. My question is-
Just real quick. Any other public comment? For a second time, or we're going to close public comment now? All right, public comment is closed.
So my question is just that the zoning ordinance, as you, as we all know, it's kind of like a living document. It's not constantly changing in our case, but it can change, and we can, we've talked a lot as a board about addressing things like climate resiliency and, you know, open space, trees, things like that, in the future. Would this be a permanent change to the zoning ordinance, or would it be just like any other part of the zoning ordinance that could be changed or removed at any time, based on our recommendation?
Presumably, all ordinance are-
Presumably, all ordinances are permanent, but they are subject to change. But there is a presumption that they will endure. And of course, as things change, then either elected officials or voters will suggest that certain changes be made to deal with, you know, the changing of the times or other things. But this is not, by the way, this is not a zoning board issue. The zoning board is not going to see this at all, ever. But the town council will have the vote on whether or not, in the end, 3A is going to be accepted or not. And they have to run a public hearing, just the way is being done this evening. So when the planning board, under the state law, checks off the box of having a public hearing, which this is, in which Mr. Chairman has given the opportunity, which he always does, for individuals to make comments for or against, and that's the way that administrative boards work, he's done that. So the role here of the planning board is only to make a recommendation to the town council. Town council will have their own public hearing. They'll have a public hearing on this change, on this petition, to change the ordinance, and they will vote either yes or no, or they can vote to put it straight to the ballot. But at the end of the day, what really is going to be the important piece is when they vote on the plan, and they will do the, they will do that, I think, expeditiously, because we've gotten some response back from the state with regard to comments, technical comments on the plan that was submitted by the consultant. So that still needs to be--
Has that been shared?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, has that been shared?
It came today, and it will be published. And actually, we need to make a few technical amendments to it. There is no substantive amendment to it, and it has nothing to do with what the overlay district would be. It is the wording and the definitions of some of the terms that go into the ordinance that needs to be adopted in order to comport with 3A.
Is the public yet able to see that?
Absolutely, it's a public document, yeah, absolutely.
It doesn't have to be posted as it?
Yeah, but you'll get what's posted. It came today at four something by email, and when we make, and I think the consultants are going to make the technical changes in it, and then that will also be posted. And I think that that also will go, that needs to go back to the state, and this was one of those pre-submission reviews before the state actually says that we are complying or non-complying in terms of--
But we don't have to do that twice.
I'm sorry?
We don't have to do that twice. We don't have to go back and forth with the state. I'm concerned about what technical changes in the actual--
She thinks you're changing the document.
Well, it's--
He's talking about the submission.
Well, I'll give you one that is probably the most important, but really, in the scheme of things, it's not critical, is that under 40A, Section 3A, they define multi-family homes. In our ordinance, it says, I think it says multi-person homes, or vice versa. So they want our language, our definition, to comport with their definition, so that when we define what a multi-family house is, which in our current ordinance is a three-family and up, that the language of the definition is the same as the state's definition. It's things like that. I mean, it's nothing that is a change of substance, and I'm sure Denise will post it tomorrow, or whenever she gets it.
I'd be glad to see the original, and then see the corrected, so we can--
No, I'm going to give you the original. Well, I don't have the original, that was submitted by--
The corrected version would be good. Just to see what the state is defining, things like family is and so forth.
Yeah, no, that'll be made available. I mean, we just couldn't get it up on the website quickly enough, and I'm not sure everyone to whom it was addressed actually has received their copy or downloaded their copy. I just happened to do it.
Is there more transparency about what's coming back from the state? That's all.
Yeah, I mean, and look--
If we could get what that's in formative is, would be great.
And I get that, and that's why, the last time I appeared before in one of these forums, I said, "You can have, I'll show you the emails back and forth from the state," you know? We're not hiding anything. It doesn't mean we agree with what they're saying, it's just what they're telling us before they put us on this list that Jack gave us, so, and where they say postponed, failed, passed, or whoever created that, the scorecard here. So right now, we are in process. Okay. So, I mean, that's the best I can do, without speaking for the state, which I won't do.
No, I wouldn't either.
No.
I know there's a lot of topics in people's minds, I mean, I can hear them, there's a lot of concern. I just want to clarify, you know, based on public comment and what we're tasked with today, I think that we, as a board, and I'm sure, I would encourage, one, you go to the town council meeting when they do vote on this, voice your opinions there. I think there's a lot of people that are in support that issues like this should be brought to a town ballot. Right? I think this issue, that's before us today, I think this issue before us today is simply, we can only vote on what we're, or recommend what we're being tasked with. What we're being tasked with is adding a section to the zoning ordinance that speaks directly to 3A. I'm of the opinion that this is, one, it'll add time in the future if this is adopted, time, complexity, cost. I think, two, it's in advance of any real recommendation or vote on 3A from the town council or from the town. Right? So--
Sorry, I know public comment is over--
It is. So I'm going to make a motion to vote no, which signifies the planning board should recommend town council that will reject this petition, 17.04.060, and we'll take a roll call vote.
Vote, come on.
Alyssa Gamble.
No.
Honor Merceret.
No.
Jason Plutro.
No.
It's a recommendation vote. Chris Boyce, chair, no. So you're right, this is no authority at all. This is a recommendation to town council. Town council will make the ultimate vote. You can make your opinions known there.
Another failure.
Well done, well done.
Four to one.
Bye.
All right.
Very bad, very bad. Lot of--
Thank you for coming.
Yes.
Give everybody a moment.
Next on our agenda.
All right, second item on the agenda. I'd like to call to order, we have more on our agenda this evening. Second item on the agenda is--
Can I just clarify one quick thing? I'm sorry. You all voted, no, whatever you, to recommend to the town council--
Yes.
--for their vote?
Yes.
And the reason was, I couldn't hear very well, because it would be costly?
This is a change to our zoning ordinance. It requires that any changes to 3A now or in the future all go to a town ballot. That could be language changes, amendment to districts, borderline changes. If each of those, that's a special election. Special elections are not free. They do cost a lot of money to hold.
Sixteen hundred dollars, sixteen thousand, she said, I believe, Denise.
It was forty thousand.
I've heard a lot of different numbers, so I'm not one to speculate on the cost.
The effect on Winthrop, the housing--
This isn't a vote on 3A. Thank you very much. Number two on our agenda this evening is to conduct a public hearing on the short-term rental ordinance, amendments to the short-term rental ordinance.
Yes.
I don't see anyone here to discuss it.
There's no need to.
I'll outline the short-term rental ordinance changes. This is a fulsome change to our ordinance for short-term rentals. So some notes, I guess, for the board. I'll outline what I've seen, and then I'd love to hear kind of people's comments. This essentially, short-term rentals aren't really well-regulated here in town today. They go through the Board of Appeals. This would change it, as I understand, to go through the Board of Licensor. Everyone need to get a license for short-term rentals. This also caps the number of licenses the town would give at one and a half percent of the housing stock. And you must be a resident of Winthrop and a primary owner of the home by which you choose to enter into the short-term rental license agreement. Those, to me, seem to be the significant changes. As I looked, there's 12 or so licensed short-term rentals in town today, and I think 120 might be listed online, so this is an area that the town needs to license and legislate a little bit better, in my opinion, but anybody else who has made this comment--
This is also meant to be kind of a revenue generator for the town--
It is.
In the sense that--
Every license pool is a--
This is happening, and, you know, the town's kind of being left behind on what it can garner from the--
There'd be a 7% tax on any rentals. Right now, the town is not capturing that money because of our lack of licenses on the unlicensed short-term rentals. So it is a revenue generation opportunity.
And is it, am I to understand that this has already gone through town council? Is that correct?
I'm sorry--
Do you know if this has already gone through town council, and now is coming to us?
It was voted favorably out of committee, and it's coming to the planning board for a recommendation, and then the council will vote on it.
So did rules and ordinances put together?
Yes.
And have they gone through and made sure that there isn't anything else in our other sections that would need to be coordinated, or do we just--
Yes, they did, actually--
--suggest they do that in the letter that, you know, to make sure that those things coordinate, and if not, they need to come back to us?
It all began during, when we had a different council, so this has been on the track for over a year, and the comments were filtered into the, to the council, and then it went to the subcommittee, and then it came out, and I think the chairman has pointed up the more significant changes, and that would be, the council felt that, and I think the administration broadly had felt that the proper venue or proper administrative body to issue these licenses is not the Board of Appeals on a special permit. It clogged up a lot of things at the Board of Appeals, and things, you know, got a little bit behind. So since the Board of Licenses issue common victualers license, entertainment licenses, and alcohol licenses, the council and the subcommittee members thought, and I did as well, that this would be more appropriately within the purview and authority of the license, Board of License, and that the enforcement would be done by the Board of Health and ISD.
So that makes sense to me, you know, being done by an administrative body rather than a volunteer, you know? But what I was getting at is, I just want to make sure that at some point we, so, for example, there's a bed and breakfast ordinance. Does any of this, like, overlap that, and just to make sure that any conflicts are hashed out and corrected? That's all.
I think that the bed and breakfast, if I understand it in the last draft, is going to be subsumed. They're not going to lose their licenses, but they are going to be subsumed into this as they go on to their renewals. So this will replace that bed and breakfast.
Okay, okay. So in that sense, it's, this is like a new section, but it will affect--
Yes, and the other one was sunset.
Okay. Okay.
I have a quick question.
Go for it.
Okay. There was a maximum amount allowable of the overall percentage of housing. How was that number ascertained? Is that relative to other communities similar size? It was, I don't remember the percentage amount off the top of my head, but it's relatively small.
I don't exactly know how they arrived at that, but I'm sure that there was some basis from which they made their computation, and it could have been a percentage and based on what other cities and towns had adopted, but I wasn't privy to the deliberative processes of the council. But I always hate to say I don't know, but I don't know.
So, first, Attorney Sipoletta, I wanted to say that I'm one of the license holders of an Airbnb, and, you know, I did tell Denise, and I told Chris, that I have that, and so I wanted to announce it just to get, you know, the open meeting going, but I felt that my participation was also important because I have experience with it, and I've seen how the rules right now are so disconnected from what's actually happening on the ground, that I'm concerned that the same might happen if we go through the process without having someone that has some experience with it talking about it and asking questions. So, is that--
Right, I mean, if there's going to be, like, anything else on a first launch, there's going to be, you know, a little bit of wobble, but one thing that I know, that the manager had been working with some of the counselors and some consultants and people who do this in other cities and towns, and as Chris, Mr. Chairman pointed out, there are a lot of these bed and breakfasts and short-term rentals and things that are being advertised on the internet, and they're competing with the current licensees, and--
Right.
--they don't pay any taxes, they don't pay for any licenses, the town does not garner its 7% tax, and there is no rule or regulation that can keep them in place, other than having Sharon Cicarella, the health agent, and the people at ISD go out and check them out, and they put the orange stickers there, and--
Yeah.
You know, we think this is going to be a better way of doing it. I think the manager and some of the people who were working along the way have identified, there's a company who goes out there, and I think Councilor Aiello is familiar, more familiar with me, they scour the internet, and they will identify all of these places, and then that would be phase one. Now, the logistics of this is not something--
So you're speaking to the enforcement of it?
Yeah, so first of all, I think you have to identify what's out there. Then you have to notify them.
Yeah.
And then you have to give them a pathway, if they want to do it legally, then this is, now they're under the radar, the microscope. The other thing is that, once that's all been done, now in a perfect world, and this is being done electronically and digitally, that the company will run or supervise, you know, and sort of oversee all the licensees.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know what that's going to cost. I know there is a cost involved. I think the council probably knows better than that. But there is something, I think, in place, and I think Joe probably knows better how far down the line they are. So if I could just--
Just a couple of clarifications. So Jim's absolutely right. There are at least three companies operating in Massachusetts that other towns contract with to sort of do the broad web investigation of who's putting bedrooms or units on the market and are not necessarily licensed. We have not yet engaged one. The reason is because the fees that they charge, but if you look at the fee structure, particularly around the penalties for illegal behavior, we've ramped them up significantly where we think now we can retain one of those firms to do enforcement of those who should not be operating in the town, and collect penalties for them, and that would defray the cost of the consultant that we hire.
Okay, because I think that would be very important, because one, from experience, there was a fiasco at the inspector's office when they targeted people who already had licenses. So the money put towards that is well worth it.
That's right. And overall, we were not looking at this a priority for the town to make a couple of bucks on this, right? If the town makes a couple of bucks on that, that's fine, but that's not our intent. If the town makes a couple of bucks on that, that's fine, but that's not our intent. Our intent is to have, uh, good vendors who are providing this. Have it be a modicum of the total housing stock, so we're not distorting the market in terms of affordability or any other concerns. And really to have places where neighbors are comfortable that I have a, um, a short-term rental place next to me, and I can be comfortable that the police know who the homeowner is. There's a twenty-four-hour line. It's always there, and it's not a corporate business. We've sort of outlawed corporate, corporations being able to aggregate five of these things across town. Uh, and it's really public safety and public enjoyment. So that was the motivations of the design. We'll find out whether we got everything right, if it passes and we put it into practice. It wouldn't surprise me that we could come back a year or two years later and tinker with it yet again.
So, indeed, I have a number of questions about it when I was reading through it. Um, and that's why, do we have time to go over it? Or how do you want to do, Chris?
Raise, raise your concerns.
All right, I'm just gonna go for it. All right, so the first, uh, general question I have, which is what-
Actually, sorry, one second. Did you, Councilor Sobbs have something to say?
Yep.
Suzanne Swob, Precinct Four. Um, this is just an observation that I had. I'm working on looking at pathways, you know, those pathways that go between homes. And so we're, we're looking at that. And in looking at that, it's surprising that some of the residents are claiming that they can't park anymore on their street. And why can't they park anymore? Because the homes that were used to be two-family are now three-family or four-family. Or there are short-term rentals, or whatever. So it's just an observation because we're all connected. That the rentals lead to the housing and leads to the parking problems, leads to the fact that they're not licensed, leads to, you know?
Right.
That's my point.
So that's a great point that you, uh, bring up is parking. So when you go through the Zoning Board of Appeals, they actually do check the number of parking spaces that are available per permit. Like, they require in that plan submission that you show you can support the number of guests you plan on having. And the end, a lot of guests-
Off-street parking, you're saying?
Off-street parking, yes, yes. So-
It's just the enforcement?
It's the enforcement, yeah. Exactly, exactly. And so, um, what happened about a year ago is that the building inspector, they tried to enforce it themselves. And then, um, they called everyone, even, even the people who were licensed, and were like, cease and desist. And so it's just really good. My main question about this, moving forward also, is how we plan to administrate this. And so I have some follow-up questions for that, but, yeah. Um, and then overseeing variance requests for this, that would be the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I think this is tailored so that there won't need to be a variance request. So if you don't meet the zoning, you're not getting the license. Because the License Commission is just gonna say, no, sorry, you, you don't meet the, the criteria.
'Cause right now, like, it, it seems like some people are picking and choosing from which one they want. And so this would be good to just, like, no, you can't variance this one. And so, yeah, just, uh, to make some clarification, what Honor said about superseding the existing bed and breakfast, that's Chapter seventeen point four-nine, Bed and Breakfast Special Permit in Transient Lodging. Would that become wiped off of our, uh, Muni code? And then this would be implemented? Would this be the new Chapter seventeen point four-nine?
Eventually, it will, it would be a phase in. I'm sorry.
A phase in, okay.
I keep trying to look around. Uh, it, it's going to be phased in, so the current licensees are not going to lose any, um, any benefits or anything. So the next renewal will come up, it will be under the usual terms. And then, as this becomes law and it's operating, then the following renewal will be under this, um, this new ordinance. And you just get your license from the License Commission. And if you're already an operator, then you've already had your inspections by Fire, Wire, and Health and all of that. So that makes it easier.
So, on that note, when I was reading for this, my understanding of it was that the, um, when the renewal comes, and that's on an annual basis, right now it's every two years. So I read into it that you would have to have an inspection every year?
What's the, do you just play me to the se- To the section, please, just for a minute.
I see Section E. This might, you can tell me, sir, if I'm wrong, short-term rental registrations should be renewed annually?
Yeah, it's the E registration renewal, and it's annually. And then it goes on-
By Inspeccional Services, Health, and Fire with an annual payment.
Yeah, that's pretty much what they do for restaurants and liquor license establishments. So they're used to doing that because they're the License Commission.
So I'm just wondering if Winthrop, because that's double the velocity that we're seeing right now, if Winthrop is ready to handle that number of renewals. And coordinate, because when you coordinate between the departments, like, one person has to call the other, has to call the other, and it gets, you know what I'm saying? And so, but you're gonna do it instead of two times a year, one, uh, one time a year.
One time a year.
Sorry, sorry. Um, and not every two years, but every year. That increases the number of calls and visits, and, like, are we ready for that?
Really frankly, that if it gets to be too burdensome, then they, you know, they have, they, they could come back and say, all right, it's every couple of years.
Okay.
But this, this is, I think, falls in line with common victualers and the alcoholic beverage and the other things that the License Commission does.
Okay, and, and I act-
Counselor Ayala had one more comment.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Intent. So, um, the intent we discussed is to bake that annual inspection requirement to make sure it's happening and make sure all the departments are doing it on one day so that you're only getting a visit once within the scope of work of the outside consultant.
Okay.
So that's where we are expecting the responsibility to lie.
Okay, okay. Um, 'cause you made that comparison with other licensing boards. I'm a licensed architect, so I know that every year, all the architects in Massachusetts have to be registered August thirty-first. And I think that not having ruling renewals, but rather, like, everyone meets the deadline on the same day would be more effective, just in a-
Yeah, I, that, that, that happens. And I, in my private practice, I do a lot of, like, liquor licensing and things, restaurants and, and the inspeccional people cannot, and they all renew in December. And by December fifteenth, the local License Commission generally wants to have the last vote done. Obviously, there are going to be times when the inspection teams, depending on how many outlets there are or how many establishments there are, they can't do them. So they just push it into January. And then if it's not done, they push it into February. Nobody's there trying to, you know, make a hard stop at thirty-one December and say, well, if you're not inspected, uh, you can't get your license. They, they really do roll it. They're not looking to hurt anybody.
Okay, 'cause, um, that was my question, when you have that kind of deadline that everyone meets, I could see that as helping make the process more fair for people that are applying for it because you have that one-point-five percent cap. And so, um, I didn't understand how, with a one-point-five percent cap, that could be equitably distributed between people who are applying. I know there's a waitlist, but I didn't understand that. And so maybe that cutoff could help.
I hate to suggest something that I'm not sure is going to happen, but, like, everything else, like, and, and let's, and I'm only dealing because it's the License Commission, or Board of License Commissioners. They have to have their own operating rules and regulations, and they're going to have to have some, something published for licensees so that all of this stuff gets, gets addressed. And that can be changed, you know, they don't have to have a public vote or go to the council and do that. They can change their own rules and regs. The Planning Board has rules and regs by which they operate and apply to certain situations, as does the Board of Appeals. License Commission does as well. And they're going to have to, um, enlarge those to encompass, you know, this scenario.
Does anyone know currently, like, what the difference between the one-point-five percent cap is and what the number of legal and illegal, you know, that they're trying to, like, is there some room in there?
That's tough.
I don't need an example, I'm just wondering.
I think somebody does know.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't have any numbers on, I, yeah.
And, and it's, it's-
Just so I'm clear, the way I read it is, shall not exceed one and a half percent of current properties in Winthrop as determined by the assessor's office. So that's, you have to, one, be a legal unit to qualify with the assessor's office, and then to even be licensed, right? So that, that's likely, that's the best they can kind of offer, don't you think?
No, no, I guess what I was getting at is, will there even be a waitlist? Or is there plenty of room in the one-point-five percent? That's what I was trying to get to.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess we don't, we don't know, right?
And I guess it could be one of those things that we tweak along the way, like-
And it says in here, first come, first served.
I, I think it's very similar to when cities and towns are allocated so many liquor license or beer and wine licenses per, you know, by the ABCC. And let's say Winthrop had, I don't know, just arbitrary number, it had, um, ten full alcoholic beverage restaurant licenses. Well, once those ten are gone, then, you know, the, those who are waiting just need to wait. But those licensees who are currently holding licenses, and just to give you a little bit of comfort there, obviously, you're not gonna be waiting, they're, they're just gonna be grandfathered.
Okay, so if you already have it, you're grandfathered, and you can come up for renewal, okay. Um, and then, going back up, um, I just wanted to make a comment because I know there's a lot of discussion about the availability of the town's housing stock and something, you know, to be aware of. So I, I liked one of the comments that this is thirty-one consecutive calendar days, which is an improvement on the wording that we currently have, which is fourteen days. So now we're in line with what the state has.
Yes.
Which clears up that ambiguity.
Right.
Um, but this would then lend to potential midterm rentals being interesting between thirty-one days to one year. And, um, I would just say that, you know, when you're making assessments about what markets could then accommodate more housing and, you know, who might switch to, from short-term to midterm and still be legally a midterm rental, um, Winthrop could possibly lend itself to being a midterm rental market because we're close to the airport, we're close to hospitals, uh, we're, we're close to downtown. And so your typical user of that is going to be, um, like, traveling nurses, flight attendants, management consultants. So, you know, while the hope is, okay, it may free up some housing, you may end up seeing, uh, midterm market users.
So one thing that we're going to have to deal with, and I, I think Counselor Ayala may have the, the date more firmly in his mind than I do, but I think it's, I think it's January twenty-twenty-five, when the governor signed into law on August sixth of this year, the Affordable Housing Act. One of the pieces, and I'm, I'm going to write a memo for the council ahead of, uh, the January, when, the January date when all of this becomes effective, because there are a lot of things buried in that. But the one thing, um, that comes to mind because you, you mentioned it, is the creation of ADUs, accessory dwelling units. Now, we don't have an accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And somebody, a legal department, is going to have to write it. So that's going to become a little bit of, uh, some interaction as well with the, uh, with the council. Because we can write it, although the state has given us a very, very, very narrow, um, set of guardrails within which to work. They're not letting us go out and put a lot of, um, conditions on it. I mean, parking is, they address parking, and they address some other things that, um, are a little bit unique, at least to Winthrop, in terms of what Winthrop has seen before. But I think in due time, and I'm almost done with it, I just want to make sure that there's nothing else coming out behind it with these ADUs. Well, a lot of people have their eyes on three-A. We've got the ADUs over here, and I'm more worried about the ADUs.
Right, right.
Just, just a question. This short-term rental, because ADUs is a great concern, right? The, the short-term rental says you have to be the primary resident of the home. Does an ADU qualify as, as you're still being a primary residence?
I think it does. The state law, we can write our own as long as we don't, um, violate the state, uh, the state law. And I do think the ADU has to be attached to it. It doesn't need to be attached in the house. It can be a garage, it can be a, an off, um, a carriage house or an outbuilding. But the property needs to be owned by the, uh, by the resident, yeah.
Right, and, and to that end, I would say that in this, um, from what I read through, I only saw owner-occupied home once under short-term rental. I feel like this could be, like, this is critical, like, in running, um, Airbnb is that the owner needs to be on the premises. So I felt that, under ineligible units, there should be like a point seven that says any units on a parcel that are not owner-occupied. But I'd specify parcel, not, um, like, building. Because to that end, also, Chris, um, you know, you, I think we're looking at it as a parcel, not, like, inside the building. And I think one issue with the current rules we have is that there's this question about building and how is it attached? And people then, you know, cut holes in their walls because they have to be in the same space, apparently, so-
Removing doors and your-
Yeah, so just to avoid all of that, like, just say parcel. And, and clarify that the owner, it has to be on the same parcel as the owner occupied.
So, so I think those are good recommendations that might be passed up to the council because the council is going to get, um, deeper into it again as they get closer to bringing it to a vote. And it can be amended on the floor, it can be amended, you know, when you're, um, at their, at your public hearing or whenever you, you decide you're going, going to do it. But, I mean, that, those are good recommendations that can come out of the Planning Board, which is, I think, really squarely in the, um, the Planning Board's wheelhouse to do that.
Yeah. And, and sorry, there's one more thing. Can we define family apartments?
I'm sorry?
Define family apartments. It's point two on ineligible units. I think, 'cause I just glanced through the, what we received also from the Executive Office of Housing, and the use of the word "family." They had number two also in that letter. I think we need to be careful of, of using the word "family" to define living arrangements.
I, I think that's a great point because that's something that might be, um, might be appropriate to be put in the definitions section so we can, we, the council will define, um, what that term means. Because, as I look at it, I know what I'm envisioning, but I may be, be envisioning something that you, as an operator, are seeing something else.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, and it's capitalized, like, it's looking for a definition.
What's that?
It's capitalized, like, it's, it's, it's written as if though there's a definition somewhere.
This is true. Yeah. Yeah, so, uh, Section, uh, Two, the definitions, yeah, definitely should be put, put in there. It, it may be defined somewhere else in the code, but if it is, it should be dragged into this as well because it wouldn't do any harm.
Its friend, accessory affordable apartments, is also not in the definitions list.
Yep, everything in point two should be defined.
Chris?
Yes. Can you just step up? Just, want to make sure everybody can hear you. In the WCAT.
I'm sorry, Suzanne Swob, Precinct Four. When Hannah brought this up to the Town Council about the, this, these units, I said, "How about ADUs?" And she said, "Oh, no, that's not even in the, in the framework of what we're talking about." But this now has to be in the framework of what we're talking about. Because I'm not sure, um, Attorney Chippewa, that if you have an ADU, that you have to be, as a permanent resident, the owner, living there with an AD. I'm, I'm not positive, but my point is, all of this is gonna have to be incorporated or else we're gonna have, it's gonna be pretty messy. Thanks.
It's a totally valid concern, right? So, I think parcels may- So, I think parcels may help with that, and then defining it as the parcel.
Yeah.
Hoping to exclude ADUs as, as short-term rentals.
That would be a good recommendation.
I'm not sure I understood what you were saying about midterm rentals, in the sense that there's no section that we have currently.
No, and that's a very gray area. I mean, not very gray, like, it is legal.
Well, it's not gray in this format, because they're saying 30...
They're over 31 days, yeah.
Seems reasonable for this particular ordinance.
Yeah, but I, I say gray, just because when you go on Airbnb and you're filtering through rentals, that's kind of my question about what you've seen about the 120 units that aren't there. They might appear there, but you may have to make sure you filter for less than 31 days, or else they're totally illegal. So, it is totally legal, but then some people might say, "Oh, they're not allowed to do that."
Okay, I see.
But it'll block a reservation from happening if you try to reserve it for less than 31 days, yeah.
Okay.
So, they may be following the law.
Okay.
And may, but you might think they're not. So, yeah.
Is, is there a maximum to a midterm rental? Is it up to 364 days, or between 30 to 364?
No, so, we just, like, yeah, you just generally think of it as less than a year, because then you go year to year.
Right.
Essentially, and, and, yeah.
These are, these are great questions. Our, our task tonight with this is to vote on a recommendation to council to take this up, so it feels like this is going to be a recommendation, apologies to the councillors, littered with some language changes or amendments. We can, we can send those over, but I think we, it's important to maybe walk through them now, so that everybody hears them, and then we'll mark up a document, and that'll be part of our recommendation that we send over with some concerns and questions. Did you have one more, one more comment? And any other public comment after Counselor Ayala?
We would welcome, as detailed, a set of questions, concerns, recommendations, as you've got, you know, we're a bunch of non-professionals. We've worked with Attorney Sipoleta, we interviewed other communities, but we know we haven't got this right, and we know we're living in an evolving world as well. So, anything you've got, we'll take under serious consideration and try to get the first passage of something as best we can, understanding we, you may see us again here from now to tinker with it.
Sure.
Okay, so thank you for all that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't know if you had public comments.
No, I'm sorry.
Just for clarity, Kirk Mallory, precinct two, I am on the board of license, that's why I stayed. And I was on the ordinance review committee, that actually this originally was proposed on, and then we didn't have time to finish it, going through it, so we kind of put it off. I've read through this multiple times, and there's still some clarity, like you guys have all been speaking about, and you all have been speaking about. And I think the one concerning thing for me is, which is always brought up, is parking. We need to make sure that's tied in, not just, because looking through all the other ordinances, yeah, it's tied in this one, but not this one. It's, as you read it here, there's not even a mention of it, but it's part of the package that goes with it. So, maybe we need to look at that. I think the biggest concerning thing for me is the 1.5%. So, if you have 1,000 owner-occupied units, how many permits is that, at 1.5%? Now, let's say there's 2,000. Well, all of a sudden, we're going to become just a Airbnb-type community, if we're allowing this to happen. I think that 1.5% is a wee bit high for our community, and it's just a suggestion to say, you know, let's go look at other communities, what they're have, what they have. I would just say, maybe amongst yourselves, is the 1.5% really the direction we want to go with this? And like Attorney Sipoleta said, we only have a limited amount of liquor license for the town. The state told us that. Luckily for Airbnb-type thing, right now, there is no real regulation on it for the limit that it's at right now. I personally feel the state should set limits per population or per owner, or how many properties people own, could, should really start setting that a little bit tighter on regulations on how that flows. So, the 1.5, maybe we can look at managing, let's say, 150 permits are allowed to be had, that is a lot for our town to have on inspectional services, to do every single year on top of everything else they're doing. Because a lot of the inspections that they're currently doing, he mentioned also, are being pushed off, and pushed off, and pushed off to try and get done. So, I, I personally, as a citizen, not on the board of license, I think even 150 permits is way excessive for the town. As a personal thing, not separate from board of license, board of license will do exactly what we're asked to do, just like you all do. So, I, I would think the parking, the 1.5, and some of the wording that is in there, for clarity, for everything that just came down, the family being addressed, it, that, even first time I read through it, and I've had this for a while now, I was like, hmm, that doesn't really specify what truly what it is anymore, even when it was first written. So, I'm going to keep going through this, and I will make recommendations to the council also. But again, just those kind of points that I wanted to just bring up for now. Thank you.
Great, appreciate it. Great insight.
Hi, Kathleen Capuccio, 49, Waldemar Ave. I apologize if I missed this before, but I'm assuming Ms. Forness will be abstaining from any votes on this, where she had reported that she is an Airbnb owner and has financial interest. And again, I apologize, I'm sure that was already stated, but it was kind of loud out there, I couldn't hear, so, but I assumed that was...
I don't think she stated that yet, she stated her financial interest in it, and then wanted to give us feedback, but I'll leave that to, this one is. I'm going to, I'm going to go through, before we make a recommendation, just make sure I kind of picked up some of the comments people are making, right? Definitions section, we want to add... Sorry, one second. We want to add definitions for family apartments as a term, define what that means. We want to add a definition for accessible, accessory affordable apartments. Right, those are two undefined terms. Any, any other definitions that we, that are, we feel are, need to be clarified?
I, I also had added that, well, it's not a definition, but item seven under ineligible units.
Oh, I think he's going kind of...
Oh, just, okay.
Yeah, yeah, in order.
Item seven? I'm not sure. We're adding it, well...
Owner-occupied, but, but...
Because I thought you were under definition of family apartments, and I, because that's under part five, there's an, I was suggesting a number seven to also.
Got it.
But you're up at the top, where it's...
Yep, yep, going through definitions first. Short-term rental is defined, short-term rental registration, I think, I don't see any comments in here, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong. LLCs, corporate entities, not allowed to hold permits. Registration renewal, I guess that, I guess we're questioning, just off, I mean, we're not offering advice, we're offering question, that maybe this is biannual?
Well, so, it's, I think you were just suggesting that the inspection not be, like, there would still be an annual fee and an annual, like, here you sign this form, but maybe the inspection, but although...
It's like which inspection, though, you know, it's like, does it help inspection?
It feels like you gotta do all of them together, and you gotta pay the fee with that.
Yeah, but then if it's all of them together, can we handle, can the town handle that? So...
So, if not, it's either biannual, or it's reducing the percent.
Yes, exactly.
If they're, if they happen all together, you call, the agency is hired, you make an appointment, they come, do your inspection, you give them a check, you're done, all in one, you know, one stop, rather than like...
That is what I think Counselor Ayala said.
You trade phone calls, you finally set something up, and then you gotta go to this agency and hand them this check.
Yeah, but we can't define, we can't define the process, we just define the time, right? So, it's either, it sounds like it's either biannual, or we're suggesting in section H to reduce the percent of current properties.
So, I would, I'd still go for the yearly, just because I think renewing, otherwise the fees are kind of being bigger chunks and...
Yep, okay.
I mean, okay.
So, we'll stay annual, and then maybe it's a recommendation for the council, section H, limits on the number of registrations townwide, that we're simply saying we should benchmark that 1.5% of current properties against adjacent or similar towns, to understand if that's reasonable or excessive.
Yeah, if there's any data on...
Where that comes from.
How that fits in with what they think people really are renting at right now.
Got it, okay. So, and, and essence, we'll say that we're questioning the 1.5%, it might be a bit high. We want to just understand benchmarking, or the, the council should understand benchmark. We'll put that comment in, but just so you understand. Let's see, it seems like adding a section, you guys can tell me if it's the right way, but adding a section before we even get to ineligible units, that defines... Maybe it's under the short-term rental registration section, that defines parking requirements.
Mm-hmm.
Maximum distance.
So, this is, what I was wondering about this, is that, is the parking just covered in where the zoning code would otherwise cover parking? Like, you have to show that you have the right number of spaces to match whatever your zoning district is for the type of place you have.
So, it's like a C-section comment?
Yeah, that's what, I'm wondering if it's just to make sure they verify that any, that, that the property has the right number of spaces for itself. I'd hate people, there, you know, I know there's a call for a lot of parking, but I think if you actually start providing inordinate numbers of spaces, you'll end up with more cars, because people are like, "Look, I can, I can rent and park, I can bring all my friends..."
Yeah, but I guess the concern would be, I, I, but I guess the concern would be, if you have a home that's a two-family, and you only have off-street parking for one car, that you're then ineligible to have an Airbnb.
Right, so, but does our code, you know...
Cannot provide off-street parking.
Does our code, if you've got a two-family mandate already, that you need more parking? And if you don't, you have to at least match, you can't just grandfather yourself in, you would have to show that you would match the parking that's required for a two-family.
Yep.
In, in terms of just not overburdening people, that, that, and there are properties that don't have the right number of spaces, and they would have to then create those numbers of spaces, but...
I view it different, rather than burdening the home, I think making ineligible the homes that cannot provide the parking, right? We're not, we're not saying you have to go build it, if they can create the off-street parking, they can create it and they're, and they're eligible. If they cannot create it, they're not eligible to have an Airbnb. Right, so, we're not, we're not burdening them. It's not like they have an Airbnb, they're just not eligible.
If we suggest to the town council that they add something to clarify parking in here, it's going to be really tricky to do that in addition to, you know, do we have a different kind of parking requirement for every different kind of use that might be on a property? Do you, do you know what I'm saying? Because you've got that...
Uses are allowed by the use, they're allowed by the use table. We're not, we're not, we're not...
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, I feel like some of the comments that people sent us were like, "Oh, well, if that bedroom has two people in it, then you should park two cars, and that seems excessive." If somebody comes with two people in a bedroom, they're going to come in one car or no cars, they're not going to come with two cars. I don't want the parking to become something that, that, because it's a, it's a, it's a, it's something that people use, that people talk about in this town. I know it's a real concern, but it also becomes a concern to just not do anything. And I worry if the parking ordinance is too onerous, no one will, no one will, no one will do it legally, like, there's a point at which...
Then they're fined, right? Then they're fined, there's a section here that, then they're fined.
But if, if the parking, if it turns out, like, let's say somebody's got two rooms, I don't want our parking ordinance to say they've got to have two cars for each one of those rooms.
No, I think we would say, we, I think under section ineligible units, we would define parking and say, we'd reference our existing parking ordinance.
Okay, all right.
And say C-section, and I don't, I don't know it offhand, unfortunately, for parking, and if this unit cannot provide adequate parking for the unit that is being rented, it's ineligible as a rental unit, right? And I think that then if people start providing, trying to apply for Airbnbs and fudging the parking, then, then they're fined and they're ineligible. You know, I, I just think that if we're going to 1.5% of the town, or maybe less than 1.5%, it's a small percentage that have the luxury to qualify for this, and they need to provide the parking for it. That's what I think. So, I think it's ineligible, and we reference our parking section here. This is just a suggestion, so I, I mean, yeah.
But again, if, if, you know, people get carried away with what appropriate is, and this is toward the town council, if you make the ordinance say there are six cars, then you're going to attract people with six cars, so providing too much parking kind of backfires.
The nice thing about per line is you're not allowed to park overnight. That takes care of that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, H is limiting number townwide, maximum occupants, two renters per bedroom. Eligible units, we added seven parking. Sarah, you said there's another section you wanted, eight for ineligible units?
That was not owner-occupied.
That are not owner-occupied, just to clarify. Sorry, any units on a parcel that are not owner-occupied.
Right, so that would exclude ADUs from people building an ADU and then just renting it out constantly without...
Well, so, they would have to define owner-occupied, is it just owner-occupied on the, on the law?
She's saying by parcel.
Yeah, by parcel, which makes sense.
Any building not on the parcel.
So, no, I said, well, yeah, okay, so, yeah, that would essentially be that.
Any buildings that are not owner-occupied on the parcel are not eligible units. So, you can't build a, building above your garage and start renting it out, kind of thing, whatever you want. Fair?
But I, but I was also thinking that, that the owner has to be on that parcel versus, because what I read into this wording is that someone could have, like, buy a condo and then use that as an Airbnb. There's only one section where that wouldn't be viable, which is under short-term rental, a residential dwelling or any bedroom within a dwelling of an owner-occupied home. I thought that that was a bit buried into the text, and so I thought that clarifying that it has to be owner-occupied somewhere on the parcel, essentially, not, like, you, you buy a condo and then you rent it out, but because that's your only Airbnb unit quota that you're allowed to have, like, the owner has to be in the building, it has to be somewhere on.
Yep, got it. I think, it does, I think, I think what we'll do is we'll share our intent here, and we'll write it as this is the intent of the law, we'll let rules and ordinances decide the language.
Yeah.
I'm not an English major.
And that's just due to the nature of transient housing and...
Yep, so, so we'll share the intent there. Specifically, the concern arises with ADUs, and then we'll address it that way. Anything else? Okay, nothing else? And Sarah, can you clarify, are you recusing yourself for the recommendation?
So, yeah, I'm recusing myself from the vote.
For the insight, helpful. We'll, we'll draft up some markups, we will share this as a recommendation to council, and then council and rules and ordinances can all over the concerns that we have about this. I'll make a motion, subject to the markups that we just discussed, which will be outlined in our sharing with town council, that we recommend approving this new short-term rental ordinance.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll just do a roll call since Sarah's recusing herself, sorry. Alyssa Gamble?
Yes.
Anna Merceret?
Yes.
Jason Plutro?
Yes.
Chris Boyce?
Yes.
Sarah Jane Forness abstained, recused. I think we'll talk meeting minutes at our next meeting, guys.
Please.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.